Okay, alright, so Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome to first meeting of the year for the Strategic Plan Committee. See, first I want to determine the quorum. We do have six out of nine members. So we do have a quorum with Mike Lovell, Will Owens, and Sheri Albano not present.
Also missing our council liaison.
We're missing our council liaison as well. Today will be a lot of, kind of a deeper dive into what we talked about at the last-
Dorota does not have audio.
Oh, no audio. Oof, we've been meaning to fix her audio since the beginning, but I guess we'll call her-
She says she may need to dial in again.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Uh, do I have my phone on me? Do you want to call her this time? Wait, I have, I have, um, I have my phone on me. Okay. Alright, got you, got you. We will dial you in.
Someone dropped off.
Okay, okay, okay. Do I have her number?
Who dropped?
Okay.
Who dropped?
Uh, Jake, I think. Yeah, Jake dropped. Okay, well, we still have a quorum, in any case. Uh, let's see.
Yeah, we do. You're done.
Yeah. Can you call her? I don't have her number.
The other power坏了 in his phone, I have to give it to those.
Okay, um. Alright, we'll just wait one minute to call Dorota in and then get back into it.
Okay, we'll be ready in just one second. I just need to call Dorota.
Alright, perfect. Uh, I got the microphone here, so just bring her over.
Whoa!
Hey!
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good!
Great, okay, so, alright. I think we can, I think we got everything in order now. Cool, we can move on to the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any comments or revisions on the agenda? Okay, hearing nothing, can I get a motion to adopt today's agenda?
Move to adopt.
Okay, um-
This is like, I, no.
Okay.
I can't get.
Okay, we don't have to do, we don't have to do seconds in this committee. So we just make a motion and then get right into voting. Just to make things quick. So Dorota made the motion. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand if you're on video.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh.
If you're audio only, state your name first and say, then say how you vote.
Yeah. I did hear two ayes.
Okay, Jake, Jake's voting.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Jake.
That's easier. Okay, um, I didn't hear any nays. I think we can move on.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we have adoption of the minutes for the November 5th meeting. Does anyone have any comments or revisions to those minutes? Alright, um, hearing nothing, can I get a motion to adopt the minutes for the November 5th meeting?
Motion to adopt.
Okay, Jake made a motion. Can I, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Melinda, aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, great. Um, that's passed then, right? Okay, um, public comment period.
Don't leave anyone who came in.
Does anyone from the virtual audience want to make any public comments?
I think you're good to close it.
Okay, hearing nothing, um, we can close the public comment period and there's no unfinished business. Uh, I suppose a lot of this is actually unfinished business, but, um, we can move on to new business. Uh, the first item is Austin with the adoption of Marvin Heritage District Strategic Plan Committee Rules of Procedure.
Okay, uh, so we drafted this and modeled this after the planning board and the, and council has adopted this recently. I wanted to bring this to you guys so you could see it and to let you know from now on, you all have the authority to amend your own rules of procedure. Uh, I did notice that there were a couple errors in it, so I've corrected those. And I've added the last, I've added a portion onto the end that talks about virtual meetings. Council adopted this for all boards. Do you have-
This one?
It's very bottom.
Oh, very bottom.
Very bottom. Yeah, this is Appendix A. Uh, basically, the only changes from what's in your packet to what you see on the screen is some grammar changes, a couple corrections here and there. This part that was added by council and any mention of the village administrator-
I'm sharing it on the screen, hold on.
Oh, hold on, I'm sorry.
Give me one second.
One second. Okay, um, so the only difference between what's in your packet and what is on the screen is the addition of Appendix A in the back, which council has already adopted. It was just, I just forgot to add it to what was in your packet. Uh, some grammatical corrections and small things like that. There was, and any mention of the village administrator has been changed to village manager because the form of government did change. So that's really the only differences. Uh, just wanted to make you all aware of that. And once, um, uh, I'm gonna, we're gonna ask you all to vote on these small changes. Uh, if you decide to adopt these, I will send this out to everyone, uh, probably either tonight or early next week. That's all I have for that.
Okay, do you want them to vote on-
Does anybody, anybody want to talk about this at all? Any, any discussion before we move on?
I mean, Austin, it sounds like you just gave yourself a promotion. Is that, I mean, that's what I'm hearing, is that?
Yeah.
What?
Now, now you're the assistant manager.
Yeah, kinda.
I love it, I love it.
Good to proceed, I guess.
Yeah, so wait, there's, so you don't need an adoption?
I did, well, what I mean is that you're the parliamentarian, so you can ask.
Oh, yes, yes, okay. So can I have a motion to adopt the Marvin Heritage District Strategic Plan Committee Rules of Procedure?
As presented.
As presented, today.
Move to adopt.
Great, thanks. Uh, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Okay. I got one, two, three, uh, four. Melinda? Um, and Tim Fincher has joined us as well. I think he joined a few minutes ago.
He's, he's on.
Okay. Oh, Tim Fincher is here, but I haven't heard him say anything yet. Okay, that's fine. Tim. Melinda, not hearing anything, but I got four out of six people here to say yeah.
Well, they're, they're, they're present. If a non-vote is a yes vote by, by the law, so.
Okay. Alright then.
So you're gonna proceed?
Yeah, we'll pass that.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, great, great.
Okay, so you're, you're good, you're good.
Yeah, we're good, we're good. We'll, uh, we'll have to keep moving despite the technical difficulties of having a virtual meeting. Okay, great, so the next item then is the discussion of Development Finance Initiative, DFI Draft Economic Feasibility Study. So this is the big thing we talked about at the last meeting. We kind of left it off at a, in a, in a way that the direction was given to staff and DFI to work together to create kind of the design parameters that we would send to DFI and then based on that, they would go ahead and create their economic feasibility study. So what we did is we created three scenarios. And these three scenarios, um, you know, take into account the things that they needed in their analysis. Um, I'm gonna share this in just a second. There's the amount of residential units, amount of commercial, the buffers, parking, stormwater. And I feel like I'm missing something. Open spaces, yeah. Some of this stuff can overlap, like in our current ordinances, we do allow stormwater detention facilities to be in the buffer areas. Open spaces can also sometimes be in the buffer areas. It just has to be designed in a way that is public. You can't just call it open space because you haven't built anything there, because that's cheating. It has to be like usable open space. So what we determined so far, they still are doing their analysis, but we've got all the components finalized. What they would plug in into their models, the three scenarios here. And also based on, let's see. Okay. Let me delete that. So based on how much room is actually available in each of these properties, they did come up with, you know, the exact, well, obviously, this is kind of a preliminary, but how much, with this density, how much commercial would you have on each property? How many residential units would you have on each property? And that's highlighted in the next table down here. Um, I summarized this, but I also included the full table in the email I sent out yesterday. Of course, I don't expect everyone to have fully digested this table already.
It's a lot of information.
It, it is a lot of information and they just started their analysis. But so far, we've determined that all of these scenarios can fit. And kind of let me, uh, let me use this opportunity to kind of drill in a little bit and then we can talk about what it means for each, you know, each of the properties and in-depth in the, the next agenda item, really. So in the low development model, which, you know, we, we kind of determined that residents prefer the low development model. That's not really a surprise. But in the low development model, we're looking at 0.8 units per acre. That's even, I mean, even less than one unit per acre, which is the current residential density. We're looking at 0.15 floor area ratio for commercial, where 0.2 is what we allow in our commercial zoning districts. Um, and fairly large buffers, a lot of open space. And we kind of, in DFI, we did kind of revamp this parking number to say, we should have even less parking than what we thought before. Uh, one parking per 250 square feet of commercial is like the lowest amount of parking that you could fit in our current kind of designation on how much parking you think we should have. And we thought that would be fine because, you know, we want to encourage walkability. You know, the lesser amount of parking should be tied into, you know, the comfortable ability to walk to this district. The medium development scenario then has some of our, you know, kind of standard material here. 50 feet for the view shed, 0.2 floor area ratio, which is the current, and 1.0 units per acre of housing, that's the current allowed in our zoning districts that exist in our ordinance currently. And then the high development has a little, has some numbers that are a little higher than that. So before I go on to explaining what this table means, does anyone have any questions so far about like what, you know, what we gave to DFI, like at a staff level, and what, what they're doing with these numbers? Okay, I mean, I know that was a lot of information to digest, but eventually, I think, I think we're gonna get into a lot of conversation in number three, so I'll just move on. To this-
Really?
Yes, yes.
I just might, this chart.
Yes.
Quick, oh man, it was good to see that second chart, you know, with the approximate acreages, et cetera. You know, helps, you know, and, and comparing, you know, the, the development acreage and those, those acreages. It helps to visualize better. And even, even I was having some difficulty before and I've, you know, got lots and lots of years of fooling with this stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I do understand. Even when we were going through this ta, this table, this one I have on screen now in Planning Board, it's hard to visualize how much exactly each of these scenarios would fit just based on density numbers, like it's, it's even hard for me as a planner to visualize how much 0.2, 0.15 as a density is. But then what DFI did, they take, they took those numbers, they took this, this map that I gave them and, you know, they plugged in, you know, if this is 3.5 acres here, this is four acres here, or whatever it is, how much, you know, that area times this density equals this much commercial square footage? And then, and then we did determine, you know, what that might look like, too. In the low density scenario, it looks really comfortable. You know, we can have several, you know, Marvin house-sized buildings just kind of scattered around the property and that will add up to 20,000 square feet on four or five acres, four acres or something like that. And in the medium, we're starting to have to have those houses closer together. In the high model, we might have those starting to look more like strips. And of course, if that's what comes out, that's not what is desired, then we won't choose that model. But the DFI will then tell us, you know, based on those parameters, you know, these, exactly how much square footage are we fitting on each property? Is that viable for both developers to build? And is it viable, you know, as an econo, like economically as a district? Like how much, how much, um, how much traffic would that see? Like would that, would that sustain itself? So they'll come out and tell us basically, is the low scenario viable, yes, no? Is the medium viable, yes, no? High, yes, no? And then, then they'll take, we'll take it to council and see if, you know, what they want to do about it. So I, I guess I did already kind of explain what this table is about. There are these development nodes and they correspond to rows in this table. And this table basically explains how much residential or commercial you can fit in each of these nodes. So just to give you an idea, like an average Marvin-sized house is 5,000 square feet. And you can take a Google, uh, I took this property, for example. You know, you take a Google image screenshot, you see what a house looks like, and that's 5,000, and then, you know, scatter a few more of those and you have 20,000. That's, I guess, one way that you can kind of visualize how much would be this. I drew this up for the low scenario here. The white areas plus the existing houses, about 25,000 square feet of commercial, where, you know, 24 would be allowed, 23 and a half. And then each of these is a fairly medium-to-large-sized house with two in the back. I don't know if that's gonna happen, really. They might need to build a road here or something, but, and the stormwater can be in the buffer. Parking would be kind of secluded in the middle. Same for here. You got the existing buildings and four, three new house-sized buildings. Parking is kind of sheltered in the back. And then the houses would be behind that. That just kind of, just, just, I just drew those polygons to give you an idea that the low, the low-density model is fairly, I mean, the way I see it, is fairly comfortable. It's just houses, house-sized buildings scattered around the properties, which is, you know, what I would say, you know, kind of captures what Marvin wants to make in a downtown district. But if anyone has any comments on that, um, I'd love to hear any comments there. Okay, alright, hearing none. That's really all I have for DFI. Their timeline is that they want to have a draft by early February. So I'll be coming back next week, no, sorry, next month with their actual results of their analysis. And based on that, council would be making a decision on, you know, if this district should go forward or not. At this point, I don't have, I don't really have anything to say about DFI. That's really a, a really important first step. So does anyone else have any comments about, you know, or questions about DFI? What they're doing, where we're going with that? Alright. If not, then I think we can move on to item number three. Discussion of properties needing special considerations regarding certain design parameters. That is a mouthful, but essentially, you know, in making this map here, which I'm not sharing anymore, but I'll go back into sharing. You know, we realized there are certain properties that would need to be grandfathered into not having to follow certain, um, certain of the parameters. Like people say the view shed is important, like driving down Newtown Road and not seeing the buildings right up against the road like you'd see in Waxaw is kind of important. But then you have, you know, these existing buildings. These buildings are closer to the road than some of the view shed buffers, depths. And there's kind of two concepts here. One, that existing buildings should be allowed to, you know, stay where they are, even though they'd be further closer to the road and then the view shed. But also, if there were new buildings, like if in this property, they built another building in the purple area, should that be okay as well? That's really just something that I wanted you guys to consider. When thinking about the buffers, both the rear buffer and the front buffer are really important to preserve, you know, to protect existing homeowners, as well as, you know, the people driving down Newtown Road and like the character that, you know, this district might have compared to the character that is there today. But I don't suppose any vote would be needed today because I think it might be better to take votes after the council decides whether we're doing the district or not. But I would, I would want eventually, maybe next time, but maybe this time, to have some conversation about some of the rear buffer situation that's going on between the neighborhood and Will Owens' property and Ravi Vasireddy's property and the Preserve. Because we do have these rear buffers, but there's no way those can be wide enough to do the same, to do the same things that we're doing all across the board. Like with these 100-foot buffers, there's no way we could put a 100-foot buffer between either of these existing houses. So in number six, I think we would go in, more in-depth about what goes in a rear buffer to actually protect existing homeowners from, you know, the view and the sound of commercial buildings. But for now, I just wanted to introduce the concept that existing buildings may need to be grandfathered into not having to, uh, meet certain design parameters. Uh, so does anyone have any comments about that?
Yeah, I mean, there's obviously a concern on, from my side for that one property that we talked about, you know, right where your mouse is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right.
We're not gonna discuss that now because we'd sort of wait to get the feasibility back, but.
Right, right. And there are, you know, there are ways to make really solid buffers that are more, you know, able to fit in a smaller place. Like when you have a 100-foot buffer, you could do a large berm and trees on top of that. But when you have a smaller buffer, we might have to, you know, make it be a wall, like an actual wall instead, or a fence with landscaping, or maybe we have that evergreen screening that we do, make people install for pools and stuff, but we have that be 95% opacity, or maybe more than that.
Maybe a combination, too?
Yeah, and, or a combination of those things, which is what I said in that memo as well. But it's just really important to consider in the subsequent meeting when we decide what actually constitutes the buffer, that there are certain properties, like this one here and this one up here, that will need special consideration because it's kind of more important to preserve existing buildings so that we have that character than it is to, you know, destroy them because they don't fit in the buffer. That's kind of arbitrary.
Yeah, I totally understand that. Yeah, uh, Rosa?
Yeah.
You know, I, a couple, I guess, comments or, or questions, maybe a better way. One just comment was that, you know, I saw early on those, those abnormal properties and how they would affect, you know, the adjoining property owners like, like Jake, et cetera. And how, you know, you just can't exclude that, those properties, I don't think, but that, we're gonna have to dig into that deeper. But the other thing is, we talk, issues the, the normal 100-foot buffer, which I think you've got drawn in there.
Yeah.
Is there a difference, I mean, not necessarily for those properties, but would there be a difference in the size of a buffer residential versus, you know, against residential versus commercial against residential?
There, there can be, but I didn't draw that in at the moment. I'm, I'm having resident-
I mean, what is, what does our, our standard zoning require? You know, one subdivision against another subdivision?
That's just 25. So a 25-foot buffer is required between a subdivision and another subdivision. But we're, we're assuming here that these houses might be allowed to be built closer together. Of course, not having a density greater than one per acre, but that they'd be closer together and then quote-unquote "more intense", and so that they should have a larger buffer between existing houses. This is a 100-foot buffer right here and we, we currently require 25. So that just gives you an idea about, you know, you go and see a 25-foot buffer, a mature tree buffer, you, you really can't see much on the other side of 25 feet. And we're calling for potentially four times that distance in this district.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily advocating one thing or other. I was just noticing, you know, realized that there's potentially a, you know, dramatic difference between residential against residential versus-
Right.
You know, commercial against residential.
Right, and I suppose it could be considered that residential against residential may only need a 50 or 75-foot buffer. And then commercial against residential, like here, would have to conform to that 100-foot buffer? That 100-foot buffer is, is what we require now between commercial and residential. So that would be a good place to start. I did see in the chat that Will Owens, I think Will Owens said something, let's see.
Is he on? He wasn't on.
Yeah, let me see if he's on. Sheri's also on.
W O in the back.
W O in the back?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, that's Will, okay.
I don't know when they came on, I need to put that in the record.
Yeah, I don't know when they came on either, because I didn't have the people screen up. But yeah, Will, if you want to make a comment about your property, now is definitely the time to do that.
I'll also have him state when they joined me, so I can note the record. It's important.
Yeah, I guess we could just say that they joined at 7:05 because that's when I noticed they were on.
That's fair.
Will, are you able to make a- Will, are you able to make a comment? If not, I can, uh, no, I'm not able to hear you if you're speaking, sorry. You can put, you can put your comment in the chat and I'll read it aloud, or we can call you.
Or just add, add them to the call.
Huh?
Add them to the-
Oh yeah, add the caller. Let's see. Maybe we do that. Or I just call him on my phone, because I don't want to interrupt the Rota's connection. I don't have his number either.
I'll go get, I'm gonna get it.
Okay. Alright, we will hang on for a minute there, till we can get Will on audio. Okay. Okay, he says, "Since the property behind my property has only four homes and nothing is residential close to my property, I would think that is enough buffer." I would say we really have to consider the use, the allowable use of the property and not what's there currently, because potentially there's a lot there, you could build a house there. You know, they could build a house there today, and then that house would be considered existing, and then this zoning district happens later. So that's just for fairness, I think we should consider it that way. I would say that instead of, instead of thinking about it in that regard, it, it may be more beneficial to think, what can we do in a smaller buffer that's more effective at buffering the uses between each other? And so, I mean, in the, in the number six memo, I've put, you know, various examples of walls and trees and berms that I found. I really, you know, looked around, found a few, and this is, this is where I encourage all of you to kind of keep your eyes out for, you know, these things, because this is kind of a team effort here. Keep your eye out for things you see that work and don't work, and then, you know, bring those ideas to a future meeting, so that we can really create the best possible, you know, design for this whole district. "The section on the adjoining property has high berms at the entrance. Would high berms be considered as a buffer?" Yes, yes, I would say that high berms would be considered a buffer, and even better than that would be a row of evergreen trees planted on the top of that berm for, you know, a total of maybe, you know, 12, 15 feet of height and, you know, solid sight and sound barrier. And that could fit in a lot less room, whereas in some of these hundred-foot buffers, maybe just leaving it natural would be sufficient, right? That natural hundred-foot depth of mature trees is sufficient. But then in something like this, you've got a berm, you've got trees on top of that berm, maybe a wall or a fence on either, on one of the sides of it. Just, we have to think about something extra than what we normally require, which is just a 25-foot depth or a hundred-foot depth of natural area. And that's what, yes, yes.
Rohit, let me throw out a thought that just came to me in regards, you know, how do we handle this? Maybe if we look at the existing depth of, you know, the parcel that we're talking about, whether it be Will Owens' property or wherever, in relationship to what, you know, percentage-wise, what a hundred-foot buffer would be there versus Chupenture's property, which a hundred-foot buffer versus its depth, you know, and maybe we come up with some, some formula. If it been, then we can transition to a different type of buffer, you know, your berms or your walls or whatever it may be. And I, and I don't know, I'm just, just, just thinking, you know, out loud.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to think about how that could be applied in a formula.
Yeah.
But yeah, I'll, I'll note that down.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think we could just arbitrarily say, well, this property gets this one and this property gets that one, just because we think that's right. You know, you got to sort of codify it some way.
Right. And that, and that's kind of where this conversation started in the first place, because for both Will Owens' property and Ravi Vasireddy's property, existing buildings are, I guess, in a position where, you know, you'd want to keep that building because that's what preserves the character, but at the same time, it's not a whole hundred feet. Like this one is 65, and this one I measured back here is 55. Of course, you could fit, you could fit a giant berm with trees on top in a 50-foot buffer and then leave it to these hundred-foot buffers to be just natural. But, but those are the things that, you know, I think that could work. And then that's why I'm saying I want you guys to, you know, think about that, and then we can come back at the next meeting and perhaps vote on, you know, certain types of buffers in certain depths.
Do you want them to vote piecemeal, or do you want them to put together a proposal and then kind of vote it all together?
I don't know yet, we'll come up with that at the next meeting. Maybe the following meeting, because at the next meeting, council still have to, council will not have made that decision yet.
Because the only thing I'm thinking is, as you're, as you're piecing it together, it's still a bit abstract. Once it's mine-
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll put a, we'll put a document together that you can look at, think about, and then vote on. So it's not like we're just voting based on dialogue. Uh, but tho, but just those are the kinds of things, like we talked about the depth at the previous meeting, and now we have to think about what goes in, you know, what goes in those areas, so that it really does work for everybody. Does anyone else have any comments on the different properties? This is the number three conversation. Okay then, seeing no conversation on that. This is, I think, one of the more interesting conversations. In addition to this feasibility study, council did want one more thing on their plate to help them decide, you know, whether we're doing this district or not, which is that they wanted to come up with a list of allowable commercial uses. And with that said, I did, I did run through the survey, you know, that I sent you guys and kind of singled out the uses that received the majority vote. And I suppose this is something that I do want your consensus on tonight, so that I can take it to council and say, you know, this is a really kind of narrowed-down list. Marvin Gardens, for example, now that's a, that's a commercial district that exists today, has a list twice as large and contains things that I don't think would ever belong in this district here, like ABC store and certain cosmetic services. I don't think that would ever be considered here. So council did really want to say, what does, you know, what does the committee think about a much narrower, much more narrowed-down list of uses that you would consider to be allowed? And here it is. Seven people responded to the survey out of nine, and I took all of the commercial uses that received a more than four, you know, four out of seven vote and singled out here. So we've got medical offices, you know, that's your, you know, dentist, optometrist, professional services, you know, your lawyer, engineer, maybe other kind of very not attention-grabbing offices. Art gallery slash art studio, therapeutic services, it's your spa, nail salon, fitness studio, that's yoga, CrossFit, martial arts, a dine-in restaurant. In comparison, takeout-only restaurant was not desired. You know, like, like Domino's up there on 521, where it's, you know, walking, you're picking up your food. That's not desired. Your ice cream shop, coffee shop, cafe, restaurant serving alcohol. A bar did end up here, in three out of seven, I'll talk about that in a minute. Brewery, microbrewery was strongly supported, specialty food market, butcher, your fish market, gourmet grocery store, which is your Reed's, Trader Joe's. They fit in a much smaller footprint than your, your regular grocery store, like the Reed's up towards Charlotte, we measured it out at like 10, 13,000 square feet. That could fit in one roof and still not feel large. The Publix, for example, the one that just opened is 50,000 square feet, to give you a size comparison. If you can visualize, Reed's, Trader Joe's would be like a fifth of that size, basically. Farmers Market, we got Makerspace and slash artisan retail, which means the products sold are made in the store. So you know, you have your, that includes your pottery, you know, like jewelry, maybe.
Makerspaces are really cool.
Yeah, they are really cool, so I'm glad that did receive a majority vote. I would love to see that personally. And we got small retail sales, so your clothing, furniture, less than 3,000 square feet. I did go out and measure, the biggest thing is the Bath &amp; Body Works in Blakeney is exactly 3,000 square feet. So that's like the biggest type of store that you would see under small retail sales. But, but the vast majority of this would be your, you know, your small, you know, mom and pop like specials, like you're, you know, selling candles or antiques or something like that. I'd say most of them would fall under 1,000, 1,500 square feet, really. And then finally, the uses which received a three out of seven vote, I just kept them here, because they're actually all reasonable, I suppose, to at least consider that if you want them or don't, to like give it another think-over. We got post office-
That wouldn't be our decision, right? That'd be a decision they could make for an allowable use, but they're not, that's not, that'd be established by, I think, the federal government.
What?
Post, aren't post offices established by the federal government?
Well, post office, oh, post office, I'm talking about if they, if we would allow it at all.
Oh, okay, you're good.
Right. I'm not saying that, none of these uses have to be in the district. This is just determining if they can be.
Mm-hmm.
Right? If someone said they wanted a post office, and I suppose this would also, well, we got print and copy services was not, was not desired, so that kind of got cut out. So that'd be like your Kinko's, but then your non-public office rental space, which is like, you know, if you work from home and wanted a 500-square-foot place that's not in your home, you wanted to just rent a space out. That's what, that's what that means. I suppose there are a lot of people, not I suppose, we determined that was a very large amount of people that worked from home. I think, uh, was it like 70 or something, or was it more than that? I forget, CP and I found out how much, how many people worked from home, and it was a lot. So there's definitely, I'm sure there's a market for, for rental, renting, like just open general office space. Then we have bar, and then also music lessons and sales, they got three out of seven votes. And then someone also said, "Space for kid and youth activities." But I did not include all sorts of civic uses, like I said, library, government, museum, rec center. I did intend for that to be a separate list, this was supposed to be for commercial uses only, but that is a really good suggestion, and whenever we do get down to what civic uses should be allowed, I suppose that definitely should be on the list. So before, I mean, before we get right, before we get into like considering this list, does anyone want to talk about any of the items that did get into, that did make the cut? Any items that didn't make the cut? What are you guys' thoughts on this?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, personally, I'm glad to see that we're aligned around some of the things selfishly that, that I liked. I mean, I, I think you get into a really exciting discussion when it's, you know, the specialty market, gourmet grocery, farmers' market. I mean, these are all the types of things that I can just say that we, on the compound here, have all said, as this happens, you know, we would hope to see. Medical offices, professional services, those types of things don't excite me at all. And look, I work in mortgage, so I'm including, I would hope to not see a loan officer's moving mortgage office there. But I know that not everything can be, you know, retail and specialty store too, so. Personally, I'm excited that these are the ones that stood out.
Great, great, it is really important to note what made it in, in relation to what didn't make it, because there were a lot of things that when we were first talking to this district with the public, general public, people were kind of freaking out about some of the larger uses. And so it's really relieving, as you said, you know, to see the things that ended up making the cut are all, you know, fairly cozy. As far as I see it.
Yeah, so you're, you know, even medical office and professional offices, maybe if some of the, the future buildings were two-story, you know, those kind of services could go upstairs. You know, they're low-impact and go up sort of out of the way.
Yeah, I could see that happening too. Well, even in a house-type building, you have stairs on the side or the back, or maybe even on the inside that just lead to a second floor, and you'll have an office there, but from the outside, it just looks like a house. It can be very, it can be very easily done. And you see two-floor commercial places all over the place. It's fairly common. Those, yeah, and also if we do decide to keep the office rental space, like those would definitely see a viability on a second floor as well.
I think it looks good, any lawyer, accountant, smug walks, dentist, chiropractor.
This is TJ.
Yes.
I think this list is fantastic. You might have seen my comment in the chat there, and someone said brew club. I think it's kind of interesting that, that was one of the things that someone was highly motivated to speak against.
Yeah.
Everybody that's called, but brewery, microbrewery, well, I personally have no problem with it. Just find it interesting, that's, that's a very highly rated thing.
Yeah, and I just want to speak to that, because I, I am, you know, I think Rohit, you guys know this, but I am pretty fairly plugged with the brewery scene here in Charlotte. And, you know, I was on the board with Moda Brewery, and, you know, know the folks at Resident Culture real well and so on. And I just want to, we still, we're all on the same page, that a brew pub is very different from a brewery. And so I think a microbrewery, a nano brewery, you hear these terms, that is very attractive, I think. You know, that's where you get into like the big beer gardens, and you know, you can run the like, cafe lights, all that kind of stuff. But brew pub gets into a restaurant with taps like they just built in Waxaw. To me, personally, and maybe I'm just a beer nerd, that is far less attractive.
You're talking about the one that's the fire station? The old fire station?
So the old fire station is Dream Chasers, that's a brewery. The new one that just opened, Waxaw Tap House, people would probably call that a brew pub. And that's very different. And so when you introduce food and sort of just like a ton of beers on taps, I just tell you, it's just a different crowd than a brewery. Now, people might-
How so?
Uh, I think it's, it's just, you're going to party, celebrate, watch TV, watch games, and, and more like, I don't, celebrate is the word, entertain. Brewery is more just like sit, chat, sip a beer.
The one thing, the one thing that comes along with just having brewery, like Dream Chasers, is a lot of them, because they want food service, which you'll have to think about either restricting, preventing, whatever, or allowing, is they have a food trailer, the parts next to them, to provide that food service. or allowing, is they have a food trailer, the parts next to them, to provide that food service, because they don't have the food service inside. So that's something you just have to think about, if you allow the brewery, do you allow, allow or disallow the food trailer?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, I'll make a note of that.
I'm with you, Jake. I'm, I'm, I will say a commissar of the, of the, uh, the brewery stuff in the Charlotte area, but, you know, me and my sister-in-law, brother-in-law, we have a, a contest of who can visit more of them. One of our favorites is up there in Fort Mill, downtown Fort Mill, a more artist, and that's extremely, extremely small. I mean, that is, that really place really brings the neighborhood together.
Hundred percent, and then, you know, that they built the, uh, upstairs patio. Um, it, it feels like when you're, when you're walking through downtown Fort Mill, you would walk right past it. It doesn't scream brewery, brew, brew pub, it's, it's super tastefully done. Now, I think here could be a little different, because we got a little bit more room, and I think you could do a really neat thing where there is space to bring in a food truck. And we don't need to go way down this rabbit hole, I just want to be sure, because that, the term brew pub is thrown around a lot, and some people might be thinking, like, again, Waxaw Tap House, and like tap, that's very popular right now. I'm far less interested in that, you know, if it happens, I like beer, I'm, I'm not going to complain too loudly, but it's very different.
But, you know, a good one, you know, unlike Old Mecklenburg, and I like their beer, but that, that's, that's totally out of keeping for, for Marvin. But, you know, these small places, you know, where, where the community can congregate is really what we need.
Yep.
I'm looking forward to it.
Awesome. I mean, I personally think y'all did an amazing job with this, uh, filtering. Um, it's really, really cozy, like, so.
It's a very cohesive list, like, it's, there's not a dive, a strong diver into it, which is interesting.
Um, and then, so, um, so with, so is there any, before I go into the, the three out of sevens, um, is there any more conversation about, uh, the, the majority vote uses? Uh, Will Owens did say real estate office, I would easily, uh, consider that to fall under, um, professional services.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, for sure.
And there's a lot of people that are real estate.
I have a question, not specifically to the list, but.
Sure.
You know, how, how, does the developer solicit to bring this business in? Does the Village of Marvin solicit? Is it a combined effort? Like, you know, how, how do we, um, you know, make people aware of the fact that we have this space here and that we want to bring business in?
So sometime between now and the time these buildings exist, we will have created a development standards. Um, that will outline what is allowed in this space. Um, so I can really easily, uh, kind of draw an analogy to Marvin Gardens, where Publix owns the entire property. And, uh, so the people who want to fill those spaces will come to the owner of the property, and then they have to fill out a zoning permit with the Village of Marvin. Um, so the zoning administrator, it's me currently, will, um, assess what they're proposing, compare it to the list of allowable uses, and then give them a zoning permit or not, based on, you know, if the zoning administrator thinks that falls under an allowable use. Um, the owner of the property is like the first, uh, I guess, uh, point of contact. They will, they'll be the ones that would even consider that person to be on their property. And then if they do say that, yes, uh, go get a zoning permit from the town. Um, and then the, the Village of Marvin does think that that does, uh, fall under an appropriate use, then they will be approved, and then they can start, um, doing their business.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. It's a great question. Um. Okay, um, so I would really like to talk about these three out of sevens, um, to give them a, like, a, a last, uh, yay or nay, uh, before, uh, we kind of go into taking a vote on whether to, you know, submit this recommended list to council. Um, so what's the, what's the opinion about a post office?
You're talking about a US post office?
Yes, this would be a US post office. We already determined that, uh, like a UPS FedEx would not be, um.
I mean, it sounds nice to have your own local post office, but then you're dealing with a lot of traffic. Have trucks coming and going, in and out.
Fair, fair.
Um, you know, that's what I'm, like, I'm thinking, okay, post office is nice, it's the center of town, it kind of creates community, your local post office, but then I'm thinking, you know, Newtown Road already has a lot of traffic. There's a lot of trucks coming through, we talked about that last time. Now we're going to have US mail trucks coming and going, in and out.
Mm-hmm.
You know, depending on how big they make it, like, okay, it, it, it's a Marvin post office, but where else is it serving? It could be serving, now you have the annexes, so it could be serving a larger area, and you might have a lot of traffic coming in and out for mail, so I, I don't, I don't necessarily see that as a good thing.
Yeah, I don't need, I don't, you know, you've got the, uh, there, there's still some of these real small-town post offices that are not much bigger than, uh, well, smaller than, than the current Marvin Village Hall. Uh, but I haven't seen any quote "new" post offices that were built that were anywhere near that small. I think the post office would be going after something larger, you know, to handle volume, which doesn't fit in both traffic and size-wise.
Right.
Hey, this is Melinda, and I'll say I have to mineral springs to go to the post offices out there, because I love it. Um, and it's easier to get in and out of than the one in Waxaw, and I still absolutely would not want one of those in Marvin. I agree with you that I think the traffic would be bananas, um, and it would just, I mean, not that it's banana, so I don't know how much more it would actually add, then people come for a restaurant or whatever else. However, um, I, I do not feel good about adding a post office to what else we're looking at.
Okay. Um, all right, so I'm, for, in the interest of time, I'm gonna ask for a vote on all of these four as I write them, instead of voting on these individually. Um, so that sounds like a no to me, um, unless anyone has any, um.
You can just take, you can just use consensus here, you don't have to, you don't have to have a motion.
Right. Well, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get a consensus on all four of them at the same time, because I don't want to have to take five different votes right now. Um, okay, so there's no more, is there any more discussion on the post office? I'm, I'm put that as a no for now? Okay, so the non-public office rental space. Um, again, this is where you have, uh, people who may or may not have this business open to, uh, you know, actual customers walking in and out, but it is some sort of commercial use, where someone comes, rents a space, and does some sort of, uh, business out of there. Um, so I guess, I mean, that's, that's all I have to say to explain about it. Um, what's the discussion about that?
Where do we, it looks like, I mean, I saw, if you go back to the first page, we kind of, I don't know if it's, so we have professional services, I mean, I don't know, I thought it was kind of the same, like, is it not, like, what if we want an accountant or the, you know, lawyer or something like that? Does that fall under that, or?
Yeah, the difference, the big difference between these two items, the professional services and the non-public, is that professional services are still solicit, like, open for people to walk in and solicit that service. Whereas a non-public office space is someone who purely rents a space, um, because they want to rent out office space to do some sort of business that doesn't actually attract customers walking into that space.
Would that, would that not, you know, sort of take us toward one of these rent-a-QB spaces, you know, that are large spaces, that someone can go in there and rent a QB for even by the hour, which, I'm not sure where we're going in that direction.
Yeah.
But, you know, someone who's got, you know, he is, uh, he, he's got, like I said, he's, he's a homeworking, he's a, um, simple widgets online.
Yeah, co-working, co-working space.
Yeah, but I'm not sure how you differentiate that guy, but I, I, I wouldn't see us putting that rent-a-QB places in there.
Yeah, I mean, like a Regis, if you're talking like a Regis, I'm not sure, but I mean, there, again, just talk about Fort Mill, who I think has really done it right. If you go through the downtown and take a left, there's a little pocket there. I forget what it's called, but they have turned like an old useless building that wasn't being used into one of those co-working spaces, and we movement, I mean, I take the marketing team, we do offsites, I mean, before COVID. Uh, and it's super charming, and, and I think could be a, a neat way to utilize a, a small, uh, piece of space. But again, if you're talking like a Regis or something like that, I don't know if that's the right fit.
We, I guess we'd have to limit it to, I don't know, fifteen hundred square feet or something, and that, that would eliminate the, if you said the Regis or someone.
Yeah, it's called Loom, it just came to mind, Loom, I think it's like Loom Networking or something like that, L-O-O-M.
I've seen the sign, I didn't know what it was.
Yeah, it's awesome. They've got little like nooks with whiteboards and, you know, connect your computers to TVs and, um, you know, free coffee, the whole thing, it's cool.
But it, I, you know, I'd say it happened to be extremely, uh, restricted.
Yeah, you know, but I, I need to tell you, like, again, the clientele, like the people that live around here, you probably got a lot of, you know, uh, you know, folks in sales, folks in travel, maybe you're not traveling as much. I, I, I don't know, that, that are just looking for, I just need to get out of the house. Even though I'm literally walking across the street in PDS, um, it's a change of scenery. I, what do I know, I don't run that business, but I could, I can see it doing well.
Okay, um, you know, I've, I, so I've, I've heard a bit of, uh, you know, kind of just a, if we put a limitation on the size, it seems like that would be favorable, um, so I'm gonna put a, limit that to five hundred, fifteen hundred and hit yes. Um, does anyone have, if, and there's no objection on that, I'll move on. Okay, um, so bar, that's your, uh, it sells, its purpose is to sell alcohol, not necessarily the alcohol made on the site like brewery. Um, y'all know what a bar is, what is the discussion on that? All right, I got one thumbs down, I can't quite see everyone on the screen at the same time, um, because I'm sharing.
So look, I'll say that there's, there's places like membership-only cocktail places, like dot, dot, dot uptown, that are, you know, that's in the same, it's almost like a strip mall, I mean, it's walkable, the restaurants like Flower Shop and things like that. That place is really special, and the membership piece, um, you know, keeps it sort of, um, I don't know, exclusive, even though I think it's like a dollar or something like that. Um, but a bar, again, same, the same conversation as brew pub.
Okay.
Um, hmm, I, I, I wanted to see what everybody else thought, but I'll say this, it's not really a bar. There's a, an old church back in New York that, um, sold, and the developer bought it and turned it into a wine and cheese bar. And it was just, just wine and cheese, and it was amazing, I mean, it's in a church, it was an incredible place. So I don't know, does that fall under bar, or if they're selling alcohol, I mean?
Well, we do have restaurant serving alcohol as a seven out of seven, so, um, I would say the bar's purpose is, you know, is to serve alcohol, and it may or may not serve food as well, um, but, uh, there's, 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 there's a different, there's a very big difference between restaurant serving alcohol and bar, yeah.
I think we're all on the same page here, you know, I remember in that survey, we, we sliced this one super thin.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, yeah, I mean, I could give examples of bars uptown Charlotte that I just, I, I don't, I think we're on the same page.
Yeah, agree, I don't think a, a bar in the sense of what, you know, you think of a bar belongs there, but does that exclude something like, like a wine and cheese place?
No.
No?
Yeah.
Not for me, sorry, not for me.
All right, so I'm gonna put.
No, I'm saying if, if we put it in here, no bar, and somebody comes up with this grid, and then does that exclude that? Or would that fall under restaurant that's serving alcohol?
Yeah.
So, I think what you're talking about is a mix between almost like specialty food market and restaurant.
Hmm. Yeah, yeah, and I can also see, yeah, specialty food market, selling that cheese and also the wine, that's not a bar, um.
Well, they're serving it, you go and you sit down, and it's served, and you go and fire a glass and.
Yeah, I would just echo what, what Jake said, I mean, it could fall under this, or it could fall under, under this, but, uh, like.
Yeah, I think if you just list that as an acceptable item, just, you know, bar, then that just sort of opens the door.
Yeah.
And eliminates all of our, our ability to control.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's like, it's like specialty, it's like specialty food or alcohol, um, lounge is the wrong word, but like Dilworth Wine, right, like that's all whole wine, but that's a specialty wine place. I think you can like carve out the like specialty alcohol and specialty food restaurants from, you know, Buffalo Wild Wings.
Yeah.
From, you know, Ford's Bar uptown, yeah.
Jake, I think we, I'll tell where you spend a lot of your time.
Not enough, not enough since March, not enough since March, I mean, Paige and I, like, every weekend, we're checking out a new place. This is like highly depressing, I'm telling you.
Understood.
Well, we may need a one-room jail cell to lock up Otis.
Oh my gosh.
Anyway, okay, so I'm gonna put no under bar, and, uh, if, uh, there's no, I guess, objection to that. Um, like, like I said, uh, you know, the, there'll be several layers of discussion when a person actually comes and proposes a use. Um, there's gonna be an opportunity for, um, the, the staff and even potentially the, the planning board and council to see if this use is allowable, um, so we can have a discussion, but like John said, you know, a bar, it does, it does open the, the doors to allowing a place that only sells, you know, beer and wine and liquor, and, uh, if that's not what's desired, then I'll put a no there.
Right.
Okay, and last, uh, but not least, music lessons and sales, um, I think that, you know, explains itself. Um, there can be sales of music items, like instruments or the books, and also rooms to, uh, you know, teach. Um, so what's the thought on that?
I, just to Rota, I was one of the people that voted in favor of that, there's, there are lots of kids here who could really use that. Um, I'm not sure whether, uh, everybody had the same vision of it that I did, but, um, curious to hear other people's thoughts on it.
You know, to me, you could almost, uh, describe it as a combination of specialty sales and also, um, you know, falls in the same line as, as in those art classes and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, I don't think it fits right in with the, personally, I don't think it fits in with the, you know, these other items.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think it would be detrimental, we just, I'm kind of a little born to it, but I don't think it would be detrimental to have, to include it.
Okay, um, a kind of list that I borrowed from, I, I did look into various cities' allowed uses, including our own, and for some reason, music lessons and sales was commonly listed separately, um, so I figured I'd put that on there.
Like a noise thing, maybe?
I don't know. I mean, in a well-insulated building, you really shouldn't hear the noise of, like, when you go to music and arts, those lesson rooms are like specially insulated, maybe that's why it's a different use than like just sales, like of art things.
Mm-hmm.
I'll answer her later, Christina. Um, so I've really only heard like yeses, uh, for that. Uh, suppose I'll put a yes there, unless there is no, uh, um, objection?
No, no objection here. No objection here.
Okay. Okay, so with that, with that concluded. I think it's time for.
So, sorry, Rota.
Yes.
Melinda, it took me a while to get on my call. So I guess the only question I have is that if none of us thought enough of these three out of seven, people can always, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if we don't put it on the list, can't people still? I mean, they have to apply anyways, right? For like permit usage. We collectively, as the planning board, as the council, you know, we hear things all the time of like, yeah, this is technically the law, but what we'd really like to do is this, can we do this, can we do that? Like even since we said, since only three out of the seven, right? So said yes to these things. I guess my only question is then, can't they come later if they had a really great plan? If I really want to put in a music studio, here's my plan, it's going to look like an old barn, whatever, whatever. We can entertain that at the time, right? So I guess if we, if we agreed, like thinking about to the same reason that we sent things off with, with the previous agreements that have the company out of, at UNC look at for us, aren't, aren't we like kind of rehashing the same thing again with these? If only people three out of seven agreed to it, shouldn't we just kind of let it lie? And then if someone brings in a really good idea later, then we say, okay, as opposed to saying, okay now, when less than half of us thought it was okay to begin with?
Hmm, that's a multi-part question there. So at, at the time when we establish a list of things, those would be the only things that you could apply for. If it was not on the list, it would probably get shot down at a staff level. And that's why, I mean, we're not finalizing anything today. I would like to get a vote to recommend this list to council, but just so they can look at what was, you know, desired by this committee. But yeah, I, I would say kind of no to the first part of your question where if someone came and said, I want to do this, and it wasn't on the list, it would probably not, it would probably not see the light of day. But if someone was really, really determined and they talked to planning board members and councils, they could then get a text amendment to change the, the law of this district to add that thing to the list. And, and at that point, it could be considered. And then finally, the last part of your question, about three out of seven people supporting this. It's kind of, you know, there's a few reasons why I thought maybe we should talk about these three out of sevens. I mean, mostly because not all nine people answered the survey, but also because I thought, you know, all three out of, all these three out of seven items deserved at least some conversation because they were kind of on the cusp. And, you know, maybe they just needed more, you know, kind of discussion, just to kind of clarify what they are. And if, say, if like one person had a different vision of what this thing actually was, it could have been on the four out of seven side, right? That's why, you know, all, all these, these things are brought up for discussion. Does that, does that make sense to, as an answer to your question?
It does, yes, thank you.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, and as I said before, I don't, I don't see it as being a detrimental, you know, thing to have. It's just, I feel a little worried, you know, just because I can't like, Rob, it's that I can't envision what it could be. But whatever it could be, I don't think it would be detrimental to a downtown area.
Okay. In a model where we require conditional use permits for everything, the planning board and the council will have to see any application anyway. I don't know the details of what we're going to do on that regard, but there will be a lot of supervision for anyone who wants to open shop in this district. Before they do. So with that said, I think I would like to get a vote on, you know, your willingness to, what am I doing? What am I doing? I wanted to put these two up here.
Which two?
The non-public office rental space. And music lessons, I wanted to put it in here. And in the final version of this list, it won't include the votes. I just wanted to include the votes to show you that, that, that was, you know, how strongly it was supported. So I, so I would like to get a vote on the list that you see on the screen here. If, if the committee would be willing to recommend this list of allowable uses to the council. So can I get a motion?
To recommend.
To recommend the following commercial uses list to the village council.
Well, you recommend.
That was basically.
It was a little simultaneous. I think Dorota made it first though. So is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay, so I'm sharing my screen right now, so I will stop sharing my screen. You got, you all got a good look at this, right? I'm going to stop sharing my screen so I can see all of you. If you're raising your hand. Okay, so all in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was ten.
Melinda, aye.
Yes, okay.
DJ, aye.
Jake?
DJ, aye.
Great. Will? Yeah, Will is having trouble with his audio. Will said aye. That's great. That's unanimous. Thanks. And again, this is just going to be a recommendation to council. Obviously, we're very far away from anything that happens here being quote unquote final, just for your, you know, so you know. That's great. Y'all did, again, you all did a great job, you know, kind of narrowing down the list to something that is very reasonable. Okay, so if there's any more, is there any more conversation on this topic? Cause if not, I would move on to the next conversation, which is about streetscapes and view shed buffers. So this is, this is again, very. It, it definitely defines the feeling of this district, how, how you go into, you know, Waxahaw, Fort Mill, and it is very old time downtown because the roads, the buildings are so close up to the road. And then you go into a place like Mineral Springs or something, the buildings are set far, farther from the road. It's, it's more rural. But then I did, I, so I did, I did want to use this opportunity to, you know, kind of explore places on Street View. And again, there's not really a, a vote being had on this item or the next one. But I wanted to give you guys, you know, some kind of examples. So I mean, we're still, this is still, you know, a work in progress, but to help you visualize what these depths actually are and what other places, you know, have fit into this kind of depth. So in the memo, I did provide three examples of these view shed depths approximately that are in Marvin. So you can go out there and you can see and hopefully, you know, visualize what can fit in that depth. And so for examples, unfortunately, so many of the places that have the fifty or more foot view shed have put parking in the front, because in the conventional, you know, commercial world, that's what you do when your building is set back, you put the parking in the front. So I found it very difficult to find cute, you know, pedestrian or, you know, landscape activated places. But that's why I also provided those like blank examples in Marvin, so that you can, you know, go and kind of visualize some of the things that could fit in a streetscape. In my memo, I also described, you know, thirty feet, if we're going to fit, if we're going to do the drainage ditch model, let me, let me share my screen real quick. If we're going to do a drainage ditch and wide sidewalk model, that takes up a lot of room. But of course, if you want a wide view shed, you know, that's what, that, you know, that's why we're doing a large view shed. So we can have the room to be comfortable with the drainage ditch and the sidewalk. And some landscaping and some street furniture. So let me use, let me take this off as an example here. So. Let's say that's, is that thick enough? Let me see, let me make that real thick. And green. Okay, so let's say that's the drainage ditch. And then, let's see, that's your sidewalk. This is a little bit exaggerated. And you have all, all this room for street furniture. Sometimes on-street parking is considered in this view shed. If you want angle, if you want parallel parking, that's like eight feet of width. And angled parking is about fifteen feet of width that you'll need. But that's, that's why I gave you all those examples. Like you see the example in Bluffton. It has angled parking and street parking and places for people to walk in front of the stores in fifty-six feet. Now I know we're not trying to do that much parking in front of the buildings, but again, it's just, it's just to give you an idea of how much, and I hope that this conversation kind of, again, lets you kind of go out and when you're looking at places, kind of visualize, hey, what did they put in this building, frontage and what could go in the view shed buffer? So that just kind of goes, like what I've been drawing is like, is just to illustrate, I guess, how much stuff can fit in fifty feet. Like eighty-five feet is a lot of room. Fifty feet is also a lot of room. Thirty feet is not as much, but the Monroe picture that I provided in that memo does show, let's see, how you can fit like the sidewalk, but of course, they don't have a drainage ditch there. They have a curb there and the sidewalk is almost up to the road. Drainage ditch and the six-foot sidewalk does take up a lot more room. But even in a thirty-foot view shed, they fit a couple of tables. Let me pull that one out. Let's see. Yeah, here. So they fit, you know, in that planting strip, you could put some streetlights, some trees and in some sidewalk, and then they fit two rows quote unquote of tables and another sidewalk for people to walk up into these stores. And that fit in thirty or thirty-five feet or something. So it just, it just kind of goes to show you, and this, this conversation today, and we can have a conversation today, but if no one has anything to say about it, I, I would just invite you to just, again, just keep your eyes out for what, if, if you see any creative things that people have put in the front, that's not parking, because there was kind of a clear, you know, sentiment that we didn't want parking in the front. But if you want a big view shed and also not parking in the front, then we got to come up with clever ways, you know, to activate what would be quite a large view shed when, you know, most downtown, you know, most downtown districts have no parking in the front, only when the buildings are right up against the road. And if they're further back, then they have parking in the front. Does that, does that make sense to everyone as a, like a purpose, like a purpose of this conversation? And what, what I'm asking you guys to look for and come back for, come back with like next meeting?
So are you looking for us to find examples or come up with, you know, rethink the vote results?
No, 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 no. I think it's a great idea that nobody wants parking in the front. What I mean to say is that it, it, it will require a lot of creativity to, you know, activate that space. And I did find a few examples and Emma helped me with that too. But as you see, when you have a bigger view shed buffer, you put parking in the front. I mean, we don't want that, so what do we do instead? Like what do we do instead to make the front of a building really attractive and not, and not just succumb to letting it be parking? Alice Jewell's Coffee House. There we go.
Plantings are always a good idea.
Plantings, yeah.
Yeah. You can do a lot with planting. And it depends on what character you want to give it. Some plants are more recognizable in some types of surroundings. You know, if you put palms in, it will look tropical. If you put something else in, it will, you know.
Right.
That sort of thing, but you can definitely create a lot of connotations with plantings.
For sure.
The other question is, is there any possibility that that road will be widened at any point before we start considering any of that? And if so, do we allot for that?
That's really a council question, and we don't have a council liaison here today, but the council is looking to take over the road from Newtown, Newtown Road from the DOT. And if they do that, then they would be in full control of whether we widen that road or not. And I'm pretty sure.
I think that needs to be, you know, kind of taken into consideration before we, you know, make plans or make plans with that in mind.
Wait, I'm on the wrong screen here. There we go. Well, South Carolina is definitely making plans to widen that road. But here we say, we have a cemetery on one side, we have historic properties on both sides of the street. I think we really do have a road block for that road to be widened at all. If it is really council's intention to not kind of encourage more traffic to come through Marvin, then widening that road is something that, except for maybe a turn lane here and there, not making it a two, like two lanes in each direction kind of thing, that would, that would definitely encourage more traffic. And council has been consistently talking about discouraging through traffic, so.
I don't even necessarily mean, in terms of widening it to make four lanes. I know that it's been on the radar about widening it, making it downtown area and possibly just widening it so traffic isn't on top of pedestrian or sidewalks. So you actually have a widening of the existing two lanes.
I see, I see.
Think about it, it's really narrow. So if we want to make it the downtown area, we might want to, or the town might want to add in another couple of feet, you know, just in the downtown area to kind of set the tone that this is, if they take the road over. And I'm just saying, if, if that is something that is on the radar, we should consider that before we, you know, or, or consider it when we're considering, you know, sidewalks and everything else.
Right, I see, I see what you're saying. That's a pretty good idea. The, the concept that like a downtown, you might want to kind of maybe split the lanes a little bit and put some median or maybe you want to widen it and just to, just to kind of put decorations on the, when I, I say decoration, I mean like just kind of some sort of symbolism on that widened part of the road that this is, this part of the road is special.
Downtown roads, slow down, people are walking their sidewalks, people are bike riding, you know, maybe even a bike lane.
Yeah, yeah.
Trail, but I'm just saying, if that's on the radar in terms of widening, we might widen some of that.
I'm not, I've not heard that discussion specifically, but I would still consider that part of the fifty foot. Like if we say we want fifty feet between the edge of the current road and the front face of the building, a widened road, a bike lane, even parallel parking, might just be considered in that fifty feet. Like what goes into that fifty feet is all up to, you know, up to us, right? A bike lane could be part of that fifty feet. A buffered bike lane, you know, even like, uh, some of the examples, the, one of the examples I had, uh, they took extra road width and put a big gap of pavement and then behind that, they have a bike lane. So it's, it's not just a bike lane, it's a very comfortable bike lane. You know, that's an opportunity too.
I'm not at all suggesting that that be done.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just saying, I know it's come up. So being that it's come up, I'm not saying we should put a bike lane or we should go with four lanes or, I'm just saying, being that it's come up, I think that we should consider that when we're making our considerations for sidewalk and plant.
All right, I'll, I'll make that note. Like be aware of, you know, widening or changes in the road. The road.
Well, have, what's the existing right-of-way? In terms of-
Um, I do not know the existing right-of-way. I can measure the road, the lane-ness right now.
Yeah, measuring may, you know, it may be a lot wider than, than the edge of pavement, you know. I don't know if I put the DOT has street coming down.
Yeah, they, they, um, hmm, okay, let me recall the discussion we had when we were talking about this tree. They did say they had just like maybe five feet more than the, the edge of pavement or something like that.
Uh, okay, so it's very old, general right-of-way.
Yeah. So this twenty, twenty-one feet, that means we have ten-foot lanes and another five feet in each direction is gonna be another thirty feet. Maybe, maybe forty feet. I'm not sure if those five feet or ten feet on each side, but it's not, like, they usually make sixty feet right-of-ways. Um, I don't think it's anywhere near that right now on Newtown Road. But in any case, um, I think we would be looking at, uh, the streetscape in a more holistic way, uh, than just how much right-of-way is available when we're making this district. Um, we don't wanna limit ourselves with that, uh, when widening the road. If, if you want to widen the road, um, it would kind of be a get-all-property owners on board with, uh, you know, whatever turn lane or, or bike lane, uh, idea is there. But, I mean, it could also be, it al- it could also be considered that this bike, uh, facility could be completely off-road. Like you could put that bike lane, uh, you know, all the way out here instead of, you know, parallel to the road like you see most bike lanes. Like why not, right? I'm not saying put it right there next to the cemetery, I'm just saying it could be that far away from the road.
Yeah.
Like I said, I wasn't at all suggesting bike lane.
Yeah.
I just brought it up because I know we talked about the widening. And I, and I don't think it's a bad idea to widen it, even if we are not widening it to make four lanes. You're in an area, you're now, there's a lot of traffic. I see a lot of DOT stuff like Marvin Gardens. They widen entrances and exits to make turn lanes. And it does make it a lot safer when you're, you know, making a right turn where there's some more room on road, you know, especially if there's gonna be a parking lots, you'd be pulling into downtown area, people walking, um, it just gives a little bit more room.
Yeah, so, uh-
I know Marvin Gardens left a lot of space, grass space, because they're anticipating the widening of Providence Road. So they've kind of left that, if you know what I'm talking about, on the front side and, um, makes sense. So they're not really doing much with that because they're anticipating that they're gonna be taking over that part of the sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying. So you're saying whatever streetscape is considered now should take into account if the road is being widened in the future, right?
Right, at any point, any way we decide to do it, I'm just thinking that why spend money, draw all these streetscapes and then they just say, hey, you know what? Let's add another eight feet to, you know, Newtown Road in our downtown area to make room for turn lanes or traffic, you know, increase traffic getting out of parking lots or people walking or whatever it is. And now we've invested money.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so Will is saying, um, he said a few things. He said, are you referring that sidewalk to be on both sides of the street? Uh, for that question, I don't see why not. I mean, a sidewalk is, uh, a way of getting people to walk to your, uh, place. Um, even if you live, if you live near this place, if you live on this side of the road, um, and want to walk to whatever, um, Mr. Pinter's doing here or whatever Will is doing with his house, a sidewalk there is a perfect, you know, and at, it's, it's a perfect thing that it's like kind of like one of those basic should-be, uh, in this, considered in the streetscape. Um, but he's also saying there's not room, uh, to widen the road on his side of the street. His, his, uh, his property does have, it, it's very, it's very close to the road. It's like one nineteen-hundred, nineteen-oh-one, maybe. Um, I'm gonna put a screen share on for this. I am sharing the screen. It's early nineteen-hundreds bungalow that was put this close to the road, right? And so, you know, that's why we, we do need to be really considerate about, um, I mean, this is a small, this is a small stretch of road. We, we have the opportunity to be, um, you know, deliberate here. Um, that a sidewalk could go roughly where this walk, walking path is. And then not much else. There's a drainage ditch, the street furniture, uh, that could go where these trees are and in between these trees and then the sidewalk. Um, and, and, and normally, you know, when you have a commercial area, like the sidewalk that's right up against the, uh, the store is like the most inviting, uh, you know, way to design a sidewalk for people walking by. Like it's inviting for the people and it's in, like, walking and it's inviting for the, the business to, you know, to display their stuff to the people. And of course, putting it on the other side of the drainage ditch and the, the row of trees is like also the best for pedestrians. But, you know, this, this, you know, what, what fits here is probably what's here right now. Um, and, and this, this issue is also seen over here with the, with the cemetery. You have the drainage ditch, which I'm highlighting here. And then if you built a sidewalk on that side of the road and that fence that was put up by Maggie Ross, um, you know, it's very, it's very important that we don't touch that fence because it was put up by Maggie Ross herself. Um, and, and so we really do have to consider, this is kind of the side of the road where we have, you know, the luxury of the width. Um, but here we do have to consider that not much, you know, goes in the front. Um, and so, you know, when we're doing a more like an actual diagram of what goes in the streetscape, you know, I'll, you know, keep that into account and not do like, you know, what sometimes planners just, uh, kind of put a blank slate as if, you know, they, they forget what's actually existing there and say, okay, we should have this width, this width, this width. But, um, in this district, we really should be deliberate about thinking what's, about what's there when designing what goes in the streetscape. Um, and I'm, I'm kind of telling, telling, saying that for, you know, both, you know, staff's perspective and the committee's perspective because here I'm asking, you know, go out and see what all you can do with fifty feet. But then I'm also saying, don't forget, you know, there are places like this, this is like, I don't know, thirty feet, maybe twenty feet. Um, and then think about what could go there too. Maybe it's, it's less than what could go on this side, but just think, think about it and then we'll, you know, reconvene at a future meeting and kind of just share with each other what we thought of, um, that could, you know, really activate these front spaces in ways that's not just parking. Uh, and I, I just, I just hope that, you know, the, some of the things I included in my memo just kind of is a starting point. I don't have all the answers. Um, and that's why I'm asking you guys to also keep your eyes out for things like that. Does that make sense?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so that's all, that's all I really have to say for that. I think what, deciding what goes and actually, you know, voting on it comes at a future meeting. So, um, in talking about the discussion of rear buffers, I feel like, I've already talked about this, honestly. Um, the, the idea that, you know, we do want, very, like, the planning board has discussed in depth when we're, before this committee was created, that it's, one of the most important things is to protect existing homeowners from, you know, the impacts of what they would consider more intense activity than their own neighborhood. Um, and so in that memo, uh, that I provided, I provided various different screening, uh, methods that we use in ordinance. Uh, we have evergreen screenings, evergreen, uh, trees. Um, we require in some cases ninety percent opacity and in some cases ninety-five percent opacity. Um, and then we have fences, uh, which, you know, just a fence is probably the least effective. Um, a fence with landscaping can be more effective. Um, then there's also walls. And then there's also just natural, uh, mature tree buffers, which, um, in many of the subdivisions, like we mentioned when we were talking about it before, um, in number three, just a twenty-five foot or more, just a buffer of mature trees is plenty enough to kind of, you know, just like not know what's going on behind, uh, your house. Um, but maybe that's not enough, um, if you have more dense housing and definitely not enough if you have, uh, potentially commercial activity up behind your house, which is why I've included some examples of walls. Um, like the one I included in Blakeney, um, if you, if you drive down Arjukel Road and you see that wall there, you might not even realize that they're having their trash equipment, trash and equipment behind that wall because, you know, a wall, even though it's in the front, it's, it's on the street side, but it does a, a good job in preventing us, the drivers and walkers on that street, from, you know, realizing what's going on behind that wall. Um, but of course, it's, it's a wall we want, maybe not in the front, maybe it's acceptable in the back, I don't know. But that's, that's for, um, you guys to think about, um, and come back at a future meeting and tell me your opinions on that so we can have a discussion on what we should require and where and depending on what kind of depth is available. Um, that's, I mean, that's all I really have to say because we really did talk about it in depth in a previous discussion. Is there anything anyone else wants to say about that?
Yeah. I like the idea of, you know, layers of evergreen and trees.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not a big fan of walls and fences. I've seen deer get caught up on these fences and impale. Um, and I think, you know, layering evergreens with mature, like pines and then things like ollie and stuff in the front create the barrier, but you continue to keep the natural feel of the country with the tall pines and shade trees.
Yeah. Um, I mean, we do that a lot in Marvin. I mean, I, I say that like from the perspective of the, the permits that I, you know, accept. Um, I'll, like, I would say, I've only really had one that used the fence and everyone else, the rows of trees. Uh, it's just, you know, it just helps keep the feel of Marvin for sure. Um, and, but as I said in the memo, I definitely recommend walls for the, you know, the trash and the equipment and stuff, but, um, for the general screening, yeah, evergreens.
One thing I do notice, um, I, I've started to do a lot of research on, you know, landscape and shrubbery, um, in some of the communities they plant things that they don't think about in the long term. Um, and they just become ugly and overgrown, um, eyesores. So, um, I think, you know, that needs to be thought of.
Sure.
Things that are gonna kind of can keep their shape, um, and look nice twenty years from now and not look like twenty-year-old landscaping.
Good point, good point. So to drill even further down and, uh, think about not just, should we do trees, but what trees should they be? Um, plants that keep their shape. Don't require that much maintenance.
Yeah, if you do shrubbery, you wanna keep shrubbery that's kind of just stay, I think, you know, straight up, symmetrical, aren't gonna grow into huge bushes that have to be pruned and then, you know, developers aren't maintaining them. Um, and they just look ugly, they keep signs. Um, we have to think about our streetlights, where the streetlights are going. Are the trees and shrubbery gonna obstruct streetlights and signs? I mean, I, I see this so much, um, down here where, you know, older subdivisions, that's happening. And, um, they didn't think about that twenty years ago. They said, oh, this is a pretty plant and they stuck it in the ground and now it's, um, things that are good for the environment, native plants.
Cool, cool. Native plants is a really good point too. The PRG, uh, board is really, um, and you're on that board, but you know how they, they really like the conversation about native plants. And that was a really, uh, defining, uh, point of the conversation when they picked which plants were going in the roundabout. Uh, they wanted drought-resistant plants, uh, and they wanted native plants. And then they were thinking about which plants, uh, look good as well. So they're, they're really, um, you know, all, all sorts of things to consider.
Right. Um, I don't know if this is something you see on the, agenda in terms of whatever development is gonna be in there, are they going to be, obviously they're gonna be using the water system, they're gonna be pulling off our water. Um, so, you know, that's gonna create a change in water pressure with more development, commercial development you have. Even large subdivisions affects the water pressure, um, because now they have to push water more. Um, and the question is, will they be, if, if irrigation? If there's gonna be grasses or are they gonna be pulling off the water system for irrigation? I know some communities do have, like, commercial have wells and I think that's something that we should consider, um, for, you know, commercial development requiring them to have wells for irrigation.
All right, I'm making that point too. Hopefully this district, not hopefully, I think it's gonna be a requirement that this district causes the extension of the water and sewer lines, uh, to service all of these properties. Uh, Melinda says, remember some of us use wells for, for our primary water source. Um, there is not water and sewer on this road right now, but if it's gonna be such a use that, uh, it's not just a few houses and buildings here and there. Uh, Will Owen says it's also on well and septic, that's what I'm saying. Um, all these houses in this district are on well and septic right now, but that would not be sufficient, um, if it's a little more built out. So this district would, uh, necessitate the extension of water and sewer. Um, but also, uh, since there are already wells, because all these houses are on wells, um, it might just be fine, uh, to also use a well water for irrigation. Um, keep those, just keep both of those things in mind. Yeah, so that, I think that's a really good, like, kind of, uh, more elaboration on, um, you know, how to create a buffer that serves its purpose also long-term. Um, again, I've also, uh, you know, we, we're looking at a berm and tree combination that, um, you know, as a, as an option that also, uh, really does help with not being able to see what's on the other side of that, uh, barrier, but also can fit in a small space. Um, whereas I would, I would propose that residential, abiding residential, that you don't have to do anything specific other than have a large, uh, gap of just natural area that has a, a minimum density of trees of, um, like pines and oaks, not necessarily evergreens. Um, but those are just all things to consider and, uh, you know, come back again. No, I, I can only do so much exploring on street views, so you guys, you know, just keep a lookout, uh, for things that you think work. uh, for things that you think work in a month. Um, I think there'll be plenty of time to uh, to just uh, pay attention to things, maybe take some pictures, uh, send them to me, um, and we can put it in the packet uh, for next uh, meeting and uh, I think the uh, the overall like goal is when uh, see, these are the things that DFI needs to know, um, like these uh, these are kind of the parameters and so, so at the same time that DFI comes to council and says, you know, based on these parameters, um, you know, this is what we think is viable, this committee will have also, you know, gone in depth about what those would look like um, and not just um, kind of just have numbers to it, but what they would actually look like and then we have a really clear, a much clearer picture about what this district will look like at the time that council is ready, um, to make a decision. That's kind of where we're going if, uh, just to clear that all up. Gotta get some water too. Um, anyway, so there's any uh, other discussion about any of those things, um, that we talked about, um? If not, um, I think we can move on to, uh, we're kind of at the end of our meeting now um, with the review of action items.
You got one. Uh, you'll, you, Rohit, you'll present the draft list of allowable commercial uses to the village council.
Uh-huh, and I'm gonna be doing that next week. Um, but I also wanna add on that action item list for the committee members to, uh, you know, just basically just keep your eye out for, you know, what works, what they think works and maybe even keep your eye out for things that you think don't work so we can compare in terms of these factors, these form factors of what goes in the front, what goes in the back. Um,
Okay, I need you to condense that down to a sum. For the record.
Um, yeah. Um, committee members will look out for examples of design factors. Does that work?
Sure.
And uh, I did put Eric Thomas down as number two, but um, since we're only at the stage of them presenting what they're gonna do, um, not that they have done it yet, um, in three or so weeks from now, he'll come back to me with a draft of the results of his analysis. I don't think that's an action item, but that's just a thing that will happen between now and the next meeting. Um, that's it?
Sure.
Action items, right?
Yep.
Um, okay then, um, this is gonna be a little difficult because some people are it's gonna be weird, but I will try to go down the list for council, uh, committee comments.
I've got the full list in front of me if you want me to, if you want me to do it.
Oh yeah, and you wanna do it by list? Okay.
Sherry?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Dorota?
Yes.
Uh, do you have any uh, com- committee comments?
No.
Okay, uh, Melinda?
Melinda's been typing, so she might not have proper connection.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back. Uh, Jake?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Jake?
Gotcha.
Jake, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Okay, uh, Tim?
Uh, no comment.
John?
Uh, no additional comments, no.
Okay, Will? I know he's having it, but having issues.
Yeah, yeah, he says no, okay, thank you.
TJ?
TJ, TJ, TJ is-
He's down there.
Yeah, he's here. Okay, we'll let him come back if he does have any comments, I guess.
Uh, nah, either there's nothing left, all that's left is, you know.
Alright, then. Um, well, well, thanks for, then I guess that's the end of the meeting. Uh, thanks for, um, all of you, you know, continuing to come out. Um, it's, it is slow, but we are making a lot of progress here. Um, and in several months' time, this uh, will be really fleshed out. Of course, contingent on DFI telling us that this low-density downtown is in fact feasible. Um, but uh, it's a really, it's a really cool thing that we're doing and appreciate all of you uh, for coming out um, each month and uh, uh, that's, that's all I really have to say about it. We don't have a council liaison, so this is uh, um, this is where I ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Dorota moves to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, Dorota makes a motion to adjourn the meeting. It's eight thirty-two PM, um, all, do we have to vote for that?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh-huh, raise your hand there. Will says aye.
Tim, Sherry?
Yeah, we still only have four.
No.
Yeah, okay, we heard Tim say aye.
Yep, good there.
Alright, now we have five. I think that's a majority, right?
It is, and a non-answer is a yes, so.
Alright then, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks everybody, have a good night.
Thank you all.
Good night.
You too.
Um, I'll stay on, people to filter out.
That's fine. I'll send you these draft notes.
Thanks, thanks.
Don't ever be, don't, don't ever be afraid to ask me to grab you a cup of water. I know you've talked, been talking a lot.
Yeah, I talk, uh-
I gotta go walk my dog.
Okay, that's good. Take care.
That's one, I already did it.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, that's fine.
Hey, sorry I missed the meetings, dude. Um, I had, we had a COVID experience here.
Oh, yikes. Um, that is going around, I hear. Um, I really hope that you, you know, you, did, did everyone recover well?
Yeah, all six of us and my family got it.
Ooh.
I had the worst, it lasted about three weeks for me.
Yikes, you're not the only one that, we've had other board members that have had it. It's not, it's not pleasant.
Yeah.
It's been, it's been hard for a lot of people.
Anyway, you guys have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
You too, good night.
Take care, bye.
Hello. Hey, Ethan. How are you? Yes, yes, we're taking care over here.